I'd like to call the February 22nd, 2022 Common Council Meeting to Order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Cutler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthune.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Kineszny.
Present.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
All present.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes is presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Petitions and comments of citizens, and as you know, we all like to support the positive things that are happening in our community, and it is like deja vu. We have the girls bowling team from La Porte High School, state competitors, Keith Gekel, the coach who's really helped lead the charge here. Keith, come on up so we can recognize the proud bowling team from La Porte.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Keith Gekel. I was the, I run the high school bowling program as well as the assistant coach for the girls' team. This gentleman is John Todi, he was the head coach of the girls' team. We had a phenomenal season. We told them, we told them day one of tryouts that the goal was February 5th, which was the date of the state finals. Through a lot of hard work and months of effort, we reached that goal. They were, they won the conference with a record of 11-1 this season. We finished second at the sectional, fourth at the regional, fourth at the semi-state, and we were eighth at the state finals.
Wow.
They had a phenomenal season, I don't know what else to say. John, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, the two milestones that these girls crossed this year, actually three, there were the boys and the girls' teams both won conference at the same year. So, we recognize the boys as well as we do the girls. And the boys were conference champions and sectional champions also. But it's the first time in school history, and it's the first time in our program history that the, a girls' team and individual has made it to state finals, which is a milestone considering there were 118 schools that competed at the same level. And they finished in the top eight, which was, I can't be more proud of these girls.
Well, John, do you mind introducing, and before we take a photo, because we haven't had a photo in a while, and this is great, introduce your team and the individual that went to state as well.
All right. First off, I'm gonna, I will announce our seniors, because we have four graduating seniors that have been with the program three and four years and sometimes five, because they, we do, we do recruit junior varsity girls in eighth grade, and they compete at a junior varsity level and gain the experience. And then, when they progress into the varsity, they've already got a year of practical experience on the tournament lanes. So, our seniors are first, Cadence King.
Come forward as we call your name.
Since he announced Cadence first, I would also like to inform the council of a special honor that she received at the state finals. Cadence was named the State Mental Attitude Award winner this season.
Oh, awesome.
Next, Callie Ratz. Ivy Anna Curbelo. Single state finalist, Kennedy Phelps. Emily Peterson. Michaela Alkins. Oh, there she is, I was looking for Chloe Ratz. Chloe Fisher. Kylie Estes. We've been blessed with twins that ball equally as well, Bailey and Riley Dilt. And our school connection sponsor, she makes sure that everybody's grades are recording and everything's up to snuff, and we don't have to go to the school and find out that everybody's eligible, but Amber.
Well, we're very proud of you. On behalf of the city of La Porte, we say congratulations and wish you best next year. But Clerk Treasurer Parthune, when you guys were talking, whispered into my ear, how do we get you in the lanes? Because she believes our council, mayor, attorney, we all can.
I did not say.
Challenge you to a match for some.
There's no way that I would be able to do that.
Waterline has been thrown out, so we'll look forward to hearing from you. And just less like we said earlier, how many pins we have to give you in this match, maybe for some funds to go to a nonprofit.
Sure. Sounds like a good idea. Well, Keith is the paperwork guy. I'm the technical guy, I don't do all the paperwork. So, he'll kind of coordinate something so that we can get that, get that set up.
We'll look forward to it.
Sounds like a fun time.
Come forward and the council will take a quick photo on your behalf and.
The confidence you have to see me, you and the girls are taller than I am.
I stand next to Nick, looks like a six. Tall enough, I can see over all them, I'm sure of that.
This come back by neck.
I'm standing next to you.
There's a lot of cooks in this kitchen.
Up high ones, good angles. Good thing Roger dressed up tonight.
Thank you, ladies, thank you.
Oh, dang it.
And the best news about this, if you choose, we do not require for you to stay the rest of the meeting, if you'd like to leave. I do not have any other public comments before us. Anybody would like to raise their hand that did not fill out a paper?
Hi, Brian Kager, I got here late, that's why I couldn't fill out paperwork. I came to actually, and I'm sure we talked about it before, as far as, and I know it's limited right now because of the weather changing and whatever else, but who do people contact for extreme potholes?
Because we are pothole-free, La Porte, you can call, actually Jeff Bachelor, 219-775-3610, and I know he appreciates me giving that out, but with the weather like it's been, we're starting to see the potholes, and they were outfilling today. So, please, we want to hear from you and the public to, when they're starting to break loose here with the weather.
Right, and that's, that's why I asked, because I know we talked about it before, and I actually came to mention this 20-inch wide, at least a foot deep pothole on Park Street, and it was actually filled in today, so, thank you.
Great, and the street department's phone number.
I will look it up online and get a brief.
Thank you, and we'll also mention that. Any other petitions or comments of the citizens? Okay. Standing committee reports.
I do have the street department phone number, 219-362-2477.
2477.
Yep.
Standing committee reports. Council President Frankie.
The big news with the schools, which I'm sure at least parents are aware, masks are now optional, except for buses, and my kids are really stoked about that. The redevelopment commission will meet on Wednesday, this Wednesday, tomorrow, at 5:15 here, and the diversity and inclusion committee will meet on Thursday here at 5:00 PM.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on February 16th, the board welcomed new member Denise Beeler. The 2021 annual report was accepted as presented. Nolan Ryan of troop number 871 was recognized for his Eagle Scout project in Soldiers Memorial Park. Nolan, along with several volunteers, refurbished the Veterans Walkway of Honor. Bricks were pulled, a new wood border was installed, tree roots were removed, sand was added, and the bricks were replaced. The walkway is now level and it looks amazing. The park and recreation department will now be in charge of senior programming formerly run by the Swanson Center. They will be applying for a grant with the Healthcare Foundation to help fund the project currently being run out of the old fire station west of the overpass. The senior center currently has a tenant, the Stitchers, who are part of the Purdue Extension Club. The Stitchers have been in the basement of the building for about six years. Since the building is old, the basement doesn't have the best accommodations for this group, so it was recommended to let them move into the old Girl Scout building located at 1641st Street. In lieu of rent, the Stitchers will volunteer to do park programs, teaching sewing to anyone who is interested. Programs and dates are yet to be determined. And then lastly, traffic commission will be meeting next Tuesday, March 1st, 6:00 PM at the police station.
Councilman Vincent.
Nothing to add this evening.
Councilman Galloway.
See, the police merit commission met on Tuesday, the 8th, and they had four applicants to be sworn in on the 23rd, and one has been through the academy. And anyway, they're looking at five for a total. And as far as the veterans go, Friday night we got a fish fry, Saturday ice fish and derby, and Sunday super bingo at the VFW.
You calling the numbers?
No.
I was gonna add something, but we're all being nice tonight, so, Councilwoman Cutler.
At the February Business Improvement District Board meeting, the 2022 downtown banner schedule was approved, and Craig Phillips presented a parking study plan request to the board that would involve partnering with the RDC and possibly the UEA as well. And the board approved $4,000 toward that study. Snow removal claims for $13,000 were approved, and quotes for two plant repairs were discussed. The board requested quotes on removal of planters as well in keeping with the long-term planning initiative ideas. The next meeting of the bid will be Monday, March 14th at 5:00 PM at City Hall, and the UEA meeting for February was canceled due to lack of business, and the March meeting of the UEA will be Wednesday, March 16th at 4:00 PM at City Hall.
Councilwoman West.
The Bid Long-Term Planning Committee met on February 11th to discuss various projects and goals for the mid-to-long term in the district. The committee plans to meet quarterly and will include a representative from the city, staff, bid, urban enterprise association, and the redevelopment commission. The main topic of discussion was planning for the replacement, replacement and/or repair of the street scape elements in the district, including sidewalks, planters, trees, lights, et cetera, as needed when the funds become available. In addition to this, discussion took place on the design and implementation of some of the heart of La Porte Plan elements as it pertains to the bid district, including the various phases of the downtown and Listitch-Munro landing portions of the plan. As part of this, the city is working with a redevelopment commission to design the first phases of this. This process will also include development and a, and a design of a test block that can be used as a template for redoing street scape blocks throughout downtown and the district based on priority as the funding is identified and becomes available. And the Fire Merit Commission met on February 9th. The Fire Department applications are now, are now available to print online at the city of La Porte website, and you can also pick those up at Fire Station Number One. There was discussion regarding advertising for hiring with the radio stations and other social media outlets, and Union President Michael McCrone reported that things are going well regarding updates to the rules and procedures. Captain Doug Bernacki is heading the team with multiple members. Any possible changes will be shared with the union before a final presentation is made to the board. Also, Union President McCrone and Tom Lusko will be touring a paramedic school, and Chief Andy Snyder requested the board to do background checks for the top three applicants of the current hiring list. He is expecting a letter of retirement as well on March 2nd from Battalion Chief Robert Sabey. Next meeting will be Wednesday, March 2nd at 6:30 at Fire Station One.
Councilwoman Kineszny.
The HPC, the HPC met on Tuesday, February 15th at the Healthcare Foundation of La Port. We'd like to thank Maria Fruth and the Healthcare Foundation for allowing us to use their beautiful new facility. The HPC welcomed two new commission members this month, Cassie Homequest and Barbara Krieg. The HPC also unanimously elected the following commissioners for the following positions for the year of 2022. Robert Alt as president, Dr. Anna Weisman as vice president, Kelsey Gershowsky as treasurer. During this meeting, the HPC tended to typical housekeeping items, but the majority of the meeting was spent on, as a planning session for the upcoming year. Many exciting rollouts are planned for later throughout the year. The HPC will next meet on Tuesday, March 15th, in council chambers at 5:30. Airport Authority, the airport authority met via Zoom on February 9th. The airport is awaiting for weather to break so the taxi and apron project of 2021 can be closed out after a few last punch list items can be addressed this spring. More progress has been made with the master plan and runway reorientation project. The FAA is in receipt of the airport's aviation forecast and will have the review completed within a couple of months. The airport will be publishing a bid packet soon for tree trimming and potential tree removal. They hope to have this work done in late spring, early summer. Diane Schwartz, the recently retired manager of planning and outreach for the airport, was flown out to Arizona last month to be awarded the Host of the Year by the Arizona Commemorative Air Force. These were the folks that flew out the B-52 and other aircraft and were one of the main exhibits at the airport's "Made in the Shade" event that transpired then August 9th through the 15th of 2021. I'd like to make honorable mention that the Arizona Commemorative Air Force was so impressed by our airport's event with Diane leading the charge that they created this award specifically for Diane. She is the first and only recipient ever to receive this great honor. 2022 is off to a great start for fuel, fuel sales, jet fuels almost doubled January from last year. And then the airport authority will meet next on Wednesday, March 9th at 5:15, and I suspect via Zoom.
Thank you. Introduction of a trailer ordinance, do I have a motion to table?
Yeah, I'm gonna make that motion, but I'd also like to open up a discussion about it. I don't know if you'd.
Can we pass the motion to table first?
Yeah. Motion to table.
Second.
So, I do have a motion to table and a second discussion. Councilman Frankie.
Thank you. I've been working on this ordinance with Attorney Otis and talked to some of our fellow council members, and there's, there are some flaws with it, which is why I'm tabling it currently, but the issue at hand is specifically there is a commercial business that is operating out of a residential property with commercial vehicles, numerous commercial vehicles, and parking them along the street side, you know, when not in operation, and it's disrupting the neighborhood. This is in a residential zone neighborhood, but this issue's been going on pretty much since I took office, I've been fielding calls about it, and I've had the police out several times, and Jeff Bachelor's been out several times, and basically, as far as I can tell, we can't find anything that's actionable. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Under our current ordinances.
Right, so, I, I agree that this isn't something that a residential neighborhood should have to tolerate, it takes up a whole block, you know, and if you're trying to park there or have guests, I mean, they're not gonna be able to park there. So, I want to work a little further on this, but I think, you know, after talking with Councilwoman Ficus, you know, with the being residentially zoned, I guess, you know, maybe I'd question why that isn't enforceable, and then, you know, I'm open to any suggestions on how we go about this, because, you know, I don't want it to affect residents, but I do, and I'm all, obviously I'm a business owner, I'm all for businesses whether it's in an actual business location or your home, but if, if you have commercial vehicles or large, you know, obstructions because of your business, I don't think that deserves a place in a residence, residential neighborhood.
Further discussion?
This is actually, we've been discussing it at Traffic Commission, because it actually came to us, because when the commercial vehicles are parked, they're parked on both sides of the street, cars have a hard time getting through, but especially emergency vehicles, and we just can't have that. So, we're discussing it as well.
Any other discussion?
I will say, I, you know, as Councilman Frankie and I looked at it, I think we looked at some different communities, I think we looked at particularly the language from Bloomington, if I recall correctly, so certainly I'm open to suggestions on how to, you know, the language, whether we limit it to residential areas or how we, how we tweak that, but I know Councilman Frankie, because he's followed up, you're getting a lot of calls, I think, about this issue.
For two years. But, and I, again, I agree, it's an issue, I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood, but I guess, one thing I don't understand, I'm hoping maybe you could shed some light on Attorney Otis, you know, what's the point of residential zoning if, I mean, it's, it's not regulating businesses being run out of that residential zone?
Correct. So, what's your question, like?
Well, what's, why even have a residential zone? You know, and I always thought that was the purpose of a residential.
You mean if business vehicles can park in a residential?
Right, and be run out of a residential zone.
It's zoned residential and a business is being run out in the residential zoning, so.
And I don't think there's anything necessarily prevents a business from being, it depends on the type of business, right? So, obviously, like industrial couldn't be there unless they were, had an exception, use exception, for example. But I, I think this is, the business itself, they're not making a product there, but there are trucks there, correct? I think pretty large trucks, as I understand it, that leave, come and go every day and are parked there at night, which is a problem, so. And maybe we can visit that through, through the zoning code as well. I, I think you're right, though, I don't think there's anything on our current books that allows the city to regulate it.
There was something about spot.
Councilman Galloway.
Spot zoning, as far as, they tried to do a couple motorcycle shops, I know, one time, but it was residential, and they came, we weren't gonna spot zone it, that's, and I don't know, if you, okay, you're doing a business in your house, that's fine, but if you got all your equipment, everything parked out in the street, that's not good. But if somebody says doing their own landscaping, gotta leave their trailer out all night, or maybe they got their boat, took it home because they're gonna use it again, that's probably different, but as far as, you know, construction or business type of equipment, yeah, I can't see that blocking up, you know, we can do something about that, I think.
Further discussion?
Councilman Ficus, you anticipate pretty soon that the traffic commission will make a recommendation to the council?
I believe we probably will on our next meeting on Tuesday, because I already emailed all of the committee members, so we kind of have a heads up so that we can come to some resolution, and I think.
But you, but you won't be addressing the business itself, you'll be addressing the traffic or the.
Or parking.
Well.
Well, I, I think that it would address the issue throughout the community, so.
Right, I mean, this.
We're not looking to regulate one business, it would be.
This one example could very well be happening across town, and, you know, I think it's likely would happen again, so we should have something on the books to prevent it, just helps to raise a better quality of life.
Yeah, and I think with all of us discussing it, we can come up with some good language for what needs to happen.
Further discussion? Has the business owner been contacted, is he aware of the issues?
I mean, I know the police have been there several times.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling the introduction of a trailer ordinance, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Cutler, introduction of a resolution.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution for the first and only time, read it in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
Resolution opposing legislation regarding the business personal property tax. Whereas the Indiana Legislature proposed changes to the depreciation floor and other aspects of Indiana's business personal property tax as a priority in their 2022 legislative agenda, and whereas the Common Council of the City of La Porte, Indiana opposes all legislation that contemplates eliminating any portion of the personal property tax without permanent full replacement guaranteed by the state, and whereas any contemplated revenue replacement must be a source of revenue that continues to grow over time, just as a property tax base would, in order to, to allow growing communities to meet the demand for services. And whereas a permanent state tax credit applied to all proposed business personal property tax reductions, holidays, phase outs, et cetera, could eliminate unnecessary burden on local government in order to continue building healthy Indiana communities, and whereas the personal property tax is a relied upon method for funding local government, and whereas for taxing units not at the caps, a reduction in the tax base could result in property owners paying more in residential property taxes. For those communities at the cap, any phase out of the business personal property tax means a loss in revenue for local units of government, and whereas business personal property tax distributions in local units of government exceed $1 billion, including $21,865,330 in La Porte County, which represents about 18% of La Porte County's property tax revenue, and whereas the city of La Porte and La Porte County would lose an estimated $5,838,613 in tax revenues, and whereas significantly reducing the business personal property tax will have a dramatic impact on the city of La Porte's ability to repay tax increment financing bonds, because a significant portion of the revenue backing the bonds comes from personal property. And whereas the Tax Foundation 2022 State Business Tax Climate Index lists Indiana as number one ranking for property tax, whereas the Indiana consistently ranks in the top states with an attractive business tax climate, yet a community's quality of life is an increasingly great influencer of business relocation and growth decisions. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of La Porte, Indiana, that we oppose all legislation that contemplates eliminating any portion of the business personal property tax without full and permanent replacement guaranteed by the state. This resolution shall become effective upon the date of passage. End of resolution.
So, this resolution is just to support AIM, which is the state, city and towns representatives with the Indiana Legislature, and as we've all talked about, we've all heard, the business personal property tax is being reviewed. I think some good news happened from a local government perspective that the Indiana Senate is moving away from doing what the House was doing, but we'll just have to wait till the last couple of weeks, because that's when unique things happen, and obviously it's neat. I think Bert Cook even recognizes at some point, we have provided enough incentive, incentives to compete here in our community and across the state of Indiana, but we still have to provide services, people expect roads, police, fire, sidewalks, and so forth. So, anything you'd like to add, sir?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to the council. I would agree with that. I think we've had this discussion before. When we lose out on deals, it's often, or it's very rarely based on the fact that cost, we are such a low-cost community, it's very rarely that factor that, no pun intended, costs us the deal. But more so, you know, the quality of life and being able to reinvest in our community and do those things that we're working on on a daily basis becomes so much more important. So I would absolutely agree with that and appreciate the consideration by the council.
Further discussion, questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the resolution is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Other business, a few quick items. We've had comments from the public regarding four days of Norfolk Southern having trains blocking crossings. I was given an update from Norfolk Southern today and said that basically, they've been told, or we've moved the current train, which we're aware of. It has been prioritized to move sometime. The Elkhart Terminal is backed up and they have nowhere to put it. So we're hearing issues going from Chicago East with the train problems. I've also had a conversation with Congresswoman Walorski's office today and asked for any authority, and Representative Pressle's office, of any authority that we can have at a local level, which is basically shunned at this point. And so whether it's Congress, whether it's the state, there is no authority. They're a federally protected transportation group, railroads, and not the best public partners, community partners, as we've all seen. So it's just very frustrating when we're told to basically pound sand. So.
I was in Goshen for work yesterday. They had the same problem right in their downtown. At least six or seven crossings were blocked.
And this is not just LaPorte. It's every community we talked to, from Warsaw to Goshen, down south, and the frustration that local units feel from the railroad. We know they're an important part. We just hope that they recognize the public safety issues they create when our police fire 911, can't cross. So with that, and then an update on the local income tax for public safety. So far, we've had 10 towns or councils pass unanimously. We're left with the city of Michigan City. We presented to them last Thursday. I've had some questions since then. Hopefully, they will, we will see that put on an agenda in Michigan City and then put, if they pass that, and hopefully they will, we will bring it back to the county council. We've been told we have five individuals on the council that will support it. So we're excited to see them vote for it and be people of their word, and the Republicans and Democrats, so that's good news. And then lastly, you know, with all these federal funds coming regarding infrastructure, when we talk about the corridor, you know, there's infrastructure money that's used strictly for new construction. So you can't use it for current roads. But why is LaPorte not in a competitive situation that, why don't we deserve it as much as other communities? And I believe we need to compete for it. I know the county's very excited about Kingsbury. Kingsbury's development doesn't happen without a corridor because those trucks aren't going to run through the city of LaPorte. And I would say, from Laura Cutler to Tim Frankie and everybody in between, that feels their business, their building shake as the trucks barrel through. I can't imagine anybody not supportive of something that has been discussed for 20 years. And LaPorte doesn't have to be that community that always says no. So further questions or discussion on that? Further comments from the council? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned.